We'll have a long one.
Long one.
Just the attorneys we got.
Welcome to September 13th, 2022, City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Paul?
Here.
Councilmember Lezero?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Londo?
Here.
Approval of the revised agenda?
Move approval of the revised agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
A discussion, a session. We have an agenda. Civic announcements will be opened. The civic announcements, we have a Chris Laymac here. Hi, Chris.
Hi, speaking.
Give us your update, please.
All right. So, first of all, the beautification awards are done for this year. We had our biggest nomination list so far. Forty-five houses were nominated. Unfortunately, only seventy-five percent of those got awarded because we lost a member to Canada, and it was three of us doing it, but we did as many as possible that we could get. We would love to have volunteers come and help us do this so that everybody in Hazel Park that worked so hard could get an award. We're also starting the Halloween decorating awards, and that'll be starting October 1st, and will end on the 31st, and you can nominate someone through our Facebook page. Anybody ready for us to measure your sunflowers? So far, the tallest is thirteen feet, so.
Wow.
We're, anybody's ready to get measured now. I know a lot of people lost some of their flower heads through squirrels. They had really, you've got really fat squirrels now because they had a good time. On Baldwin House side, we're sponsoring a preview of the movie Boblow. The Boat Movie is what it was called. I have pamphlets up here, but it's going to be September 29th from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Imagine Theater in Rochester Hills. There'll be refreshments in the preview of the movie. All you have to do is call that number that I gave you before and leave your name because that's your ticket. So you just call, call us up, give your name, and you'd be able to come to that movie. We can't transport you, but you're able to come and see it. It should be really fun. I saw the trailer, and it looks really good. Just wanted to remind the council that the Hazel Park Madison Heights Chamber is having their golf outing. Anybody would like to, more information about that, they can call me. And on Thursday, we're having our networking dinner at 4:30 if anybody's wanting to come to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any other civic announcements for the audience? I'd like to have a civic announcement from Alyssa Sullivan about the art fair, if you don't mind, an update.
Sure. I wasn't expecting that, so I apologize. I did not come with specific numbers, but we did just have our meeting last night. This year's fair was our biggest fair so far, and each year, we're learning a little bit more. We have some big changes coming up for next year. We think we're gonna change up some of the musical vibe a little bit, but the feedback we got again was overwhelmingly positive. This was the first year that we had less attendance on the second day. Every other year, it's always more attendance on the second day, but we still beat numbers of attendance, just like we have each year previously. So, big thanks to everybody that attended. Thanks to our city administration, who allows the Arts Council to host it here, and our amazing Parks Department and our Police Department for coming out and supporting it as well, helping people keep safe and organized. Thank you to all of our volunteers. It was a great, it was a really great event, and we look forward to hosting it again next year, so we'll be back.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other civic announcements from the City Council? I think our Police Chief has a civic announcement. Come on up.
You're catching everybody off.
I'm catching everybody off guard tonight.
Yeah, I hope he has a civic announcement after that. He just comes up and says, "Drive safely, watch out for bicyclists." I don't know.
I just wanted to give an update on what happened last night, and kudos to all the officers that were involved.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Yeah, I wanted to say thanks to our neighbors that help us out a lot of times. We got to return the favor last night. Mass Night's had an armed robbery just inside of their town, and got the suspect description of the vehicle. One of our officers saw it on Ten Mile. Short chase in our town, went back into Madison Heights. They kept on turning and looked like they're gonna bail, which they did, or meaning they ditched the car and ran on foot. We ended up catching all five suspects. Recovered a gun inside the vehicle at the time. I don't know the details on that, but it looked like it was one of those ghost guns where, didn't know how it was made kind of thing. And recovered another one later on in the morning. Three juveniles, two adults. Just crazy stuff at 2:00 AM. And then about 12:30 this afternoon, Royal Oak had a domestic situation where witnesses said shots were fired. Gunner officers were on the freeway and located it, made a stop, and arrested those guys also. So, not sure what kind of charges they're gonna have there, but it was a good day.
Nice.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks to all the officers. Okay, it takes us to public discussion. We have closed civic announcements and open up public discussion. We have public discussion from Mike Forbes. 508, Mayor T.
Buenos noches. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Augusto Mike Flores on Manatee Avenue. I've engaged with many of you as a representative of a nonprofit, as a community advocate, or as an engaged individual in the political process. However, today, I'm here selfishly representing myself as a concerned Hazel Park resident. Over the Labor Day weekend, my partner, my niece, my nephew, and I went on an adventure to enjoy delicious treats from Douglas Delight. This was an adventure for my niece and nephew because they are from a suburb where walkability is not a value. Rarely are they able to go on an adventure like this. During our adventure, we walked, we skipped, and they tripped over each other's words trying to share their pre-K and kindergarten stories. At every intersection, Josh and I used the opportunity to teach pedestrian safety. Look both ways. White icon means safe to walk. Red and orange icon means no crossing allowed. Fast forward to the intersection of John R. and Woodward Heights, and we are patiently waiting on the southwest corner. The excitement is growing because our end destination, Doug's Delight, is within sight. The children see the white icon. They look up. They give us a nod signaling they know it's okay to cross our city's main street. Josh and I do a double confirmation, looking both ways, and start crossing John R. I want to pause here. Up to this morning, up to this moment, this truly American story has been replicated all over our country. Families enjoying the holiday weekend. But what transpired, masks, could have tragically turned into a nightmare. As we crossed, a careless driver sped from the southbound Woodward Heights Lane onto southbound John R., swerving at mid-intersection, realizing they were about to hit a family. Another careless driver blindly following the previous car completely stopped at mid-intersection, realizing their horrific mistake. What I'm sure were only seconds automatically slowed for me as I grabbed one child and Josh grabbed the other, as bystanders helplessly honked to prevent a tragedy. After a few curated choice words, a moment to ensure that the children were safe on the corner, I look up. John R. has returned to its normal state, the aggressors long gone, and us left behind trying to return to our adventure knowing what could have happened. I am happy to report that we made it safely to our final destination, and we overindulged the children with sweets, trying to forget. I shared this story on a community forum, and the story resonated with almost 200 community members. And an additional dozen stories were shared of near misses on the same or nearby intersections. Some of you on council also engaged and chaired on future plans to improve John R., to make it safer. I'm here to encourage you not to wait. Let's not rely on the future to fix what needs to be done to make the street and intersection safe. I understand the financial barriers, and I want to propose what I hope is a low-cost, high-impact solution that can be implemented sooner than later. Let's make the specific intersection a no-turn on red. Let's reprogram the traffic lights to all turn red when the pedestrian button is engaged. This will allow for safe crossings by all, both motorized and pedestrians. I hope my adventure story to Doug's Delight continues to be a happy American story in Hazel Park. Thank you for your service to our community, consideration of my suggestion, and your continued commitment to make Hazel Park a safe community for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry you had to endure that. I'm glad that the situation worked itself out, and hopefully, we can come to some resolution as to making this corner a little safer. And our Police Chief can give us a report on how we can do that, I guess, in the near, short future. Thank you. Let's move on to Darlene Shaughnessy.
My name is Darlene Shaughnessy, and I live at 1122 East Granite. And I heard a rumor that the apartment complex deal at Landmark is off. It's gone away?
As of this point, yes.
Okay. I sort of wanted to present a different viewpoint to the City Council. When I was here a couple of meetings ago, I remember the developer came in, and the City Council said, "Hey, our residents don't want any more rental units." And then a little while later in the meeting, the city manager brought up again the broken taxation system. So I was sort of thinking about it for like a month, you know? And then I realized, to my, best of my knowledge, rental property pays a higher tax rate than individual homes do. I'm going to assume that apartment buildings pay a little bit more than that. Okay? So, Landmark is a pretty big site. If those had apartment buildings on them, that would help fund the deficit and the pension.
It also requires us to add at least two to three more officers, try Police Force.
Okay, but you guys were into it until you thought.
On the other hand of this, I'm trying to give you a couple scenarios here.
Okay.
Get two or three more officers that we have to add for protection because, you know, you have to add that many people to the community.
Mm-hmm.
Dense area.
Right.
Something to be done. And then you also have to look at the other side of it. We were giving up a pretty big tax abatement there.
Oh, he asked for a tax abatement?
Yes.
Okay, didn't know that.
So, looking at it in a broader perspective, long term, it's not advantageous to be 100% rental. It would be better to have at least 60% rental instead of the whole thing being rental.
And if I can clarify something as well, yes, property that is commercial or property that is non-homestead does pay an extra millage, but that is 18 mils that goes to the state for education.
Doesn't come back to.
Doesn't come to you at all? Ooh, that's bad.
Straight to the state for the education fund.
Okay, so that tells me that, okay.
If they want to share the lottery with us, that'd be nice. You know, the lottery proceeds would also help the cities as well.
They allege it goes to.
But they got, they got so much resources there, they don't care anything else about the communities.
Now, one thing that is cool, though, because we're Hazel Park, and we're a promise zone, we do get to capture some of the money from brand new developments that stay here in Hazel Park and goes to the promise zone, and it doesn't reduce our per pupil allocation from the state. So, being a promise zone, it's very advantageous to us to get new development because it will help that, but it's not gonna come to the city, and it won't be available.
It's a small amount.
The government to use.
Small amount.
But it's something. It's better than, it's better than what some other cities don't, they don't get either.
But the church right now, property doesn't pay any kind of taxes, right? Okay, so, have you guys?
It's not really about the taxes. It's about the property being in disarray. It's more about the school part of the church that has never been repaired in 20 years or better, and they never really looked forward to even doing anything with it. We tried. Bill Rebeckers has special means with the pastor of the church and everything else. We worked tirelessly with many hours, with no avail. He has no respect for how he wants to move forward on the property.
Yeah, I'm familiar with some of the story.
As far as I'm gonna go.
And again, we did meet with Pastor Barry last week. He is interested in doing something with the property. I believe at this point, he wishes he had a time machine and could go back and accept one of those previous offers that were given to him a couple of years ago that he should have taken.
And he did.
So, he failed to do that. He realizes this now. And again, you know, we conveyed to him, we've been very patient, and we haven't issued any tickets with Barry David's name on them yet, but he's going to have to move to do something soon, or sooner or later, those tickets will be issued.
Okay, do we have any knowledge of any other developers who have come forward maybe to put up individual homes?
It's all about what price he will, yeah, there's people who are interested.
Everybody wants to do something for a right amount of price.
It's just, it's, it's what is the price he's willing to accept? And, look, markets change.
Right.
Okay? Timings change, and again, he should have taken the offer.
Interesting.
Two years ago, and there were multiple offers for single-family housing or mixed developments. And remember, the developer brought two plans. One had a small apartment building on it and single-family housing, and council was quite receptive to that plan.
Okay.
And then when he came back, he didn't bring that plan back, said his investors didn't think that was workable, and he came back with a couple, few large apartment complexes. So that would change the character.
That looked like a prison from the outside.
It did. It was, it was bad.
I want to say, this isn't a question-answer section, but I do want to make a comment that long-term city planning is bigger, and the continuity of our, of our community is bigger than a short-term tax fix. That is something that I think is easily overlooked when you see these numbers being talked about.
Exactly.
The reality is, who here in the city knows we have how many large apartment complexes, right? The reality is accessible housing is important, and it's needed desperately across the nation. We have very little space left in our city that is buildable, and so we want to make sure that we are putting the best housing there, not just the quickest housing, or not just the most beneficial financially to us, but best housing for everybody in the long-term planning of our city goals.
And I would argue with that, that Hazel Park will not exist if they can't make those pension funds. They can't pay that bill, we don't exist.
But we're paying the bill.
We're paying the bill.
The bill's paid.
We, and again, like I said, we, we find a way, we find a way to pay the bill. Yes, we are all concerned about the pension, and one good thing, Darlene, about you coming up and mentioning it every couple of weeks, is that we get the chance to tell that story so everybody understands it, like you do. What a big, huge weight that is on our shoulders. On the other hand, the state of Michigan, in a shocking example of bipartisan cooperation and common sense, did appropriate the better part of a billion dollars to cities to help with those pension funds. Now, that's not gonna help us in the next year or two because of the way the amortization schedule works, but it should provide some relief in the long term, so at least Hazel Park residents probably should not be hit with some kind of a judgment levy requiring them to make up the difference in the pension contribution.
Okay.
We lobbied very hard for that, and I want to thank the Municipal League and, you know, our partners on that, that helped lobby as well, because it was a big, important thing for older communities.
Well, the only reason I kept circling back to is because they kept talking about in City Council about how if we couldn't make those payments, we were gonna have the state coming in to levy taxes. And so I was becoming more alarmed the more I heard City Council talk about it.
We're not talking about how we can't make those payments. We're telling people if we don't make those payments.
Yes, yeah.
That is the difference. So we have people who have these grand ideas that like to talk about things that they're not fully aware of, and they talk about it in this very flippant way, that this money should be set to that when we have appointed this money, and we have specifically put this money in this place to cover those costs. If we don't cover those costs, which we have covered, if we took that money and put it someplace else, then we are at risk for that. But we have already covered that, so we are, the conversation is repeatedly telling those people what they're saying is incorrect.
We're making the end roads to finishing, you know, we're making every end road to properly fund that.
One of.
Okay.
We, we have some economic downturns, '08, '09, '10, '11, '12, that we had to overcome and make adjustments for, and we sometimes, we didn't quite make the whole pension payment that back then because our tax base plummeted.
Right.
Because of the weight proposal, and headly, it goes right back to the system of municipal finances fundamentally broken. Goes right back to it.
I have to say, one of the strings attached to us accepting the money from the state of Michigan is that we have to make all of our pension contributions. We can't miss.
Can't miss. We're stuck.
Okay. That's all right. That's okay, I learned something.
Which is a great thing.
Because you can't miss.
Even after we're gone, they have no choice. Other councils, they have to make that payment.
Okay.
Won't put our city in dire straits.
Okay. All righty, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public discussion? From the public, anyone? Seeing no one? Closing public discussion? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda, but ask that item 10 be read aloud.
Support.
Support. A discussion on any one of the items 1 through 14 before we read item 10. Anyone? Go ahead and read item 10. Councilmember Londo.
City of Hazel Park Resolution 09-020-22. September as entheogenic plant and fungi awareness month. Whereas substance abuse, addiction, recidivism, trauma, post-traumatic stress symptoms, chronic depression, severe anxiety, and of-life anxiety, grief, and cluster headaches are conditions experienced by individuals across the globe. And whereas, the use of entheogenic plants and fungi has been shown in scientific and clinical studies, as well as traditional practices, to be beneficial to the health and well-being of individuals and communities in addressing these conditions, as well as for reasons of personal and spiritual growth. And whereas, practice with entheogenic plants and fungi have been considered sacred to some human cultures and human relationships with nature for thousands of years. And whereas, as far back as the 1960s, clinical studies and research in the U.S., Canada, and Europe have shown the safety and efficacy of entheogenic plants and fungi for treating a variety of mental health illnesses. And whereas, the Food and Drug Administration granted breakthrough therapy designation to psilocybin for use in major depressive disorders. While it has also been shown to ease treatment-resistant depression, end-of-life anxiety, and cluster headaches, Ibogaine has been shown to be an effective treatment for opiate addiction, and ayahuasca studies are currently underway to better understand its ability to address depression and substance dependence. And whereas, on March 22nd, 2022, the City of Hazel Park adopted Resolution 03-008-22, which made the investigation and arrest of persons planting, cultivating, purchasing, transporting, distributing, engaging in practices with or possessing entheogenic plants the lowest enforcement priority. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Hazel Park does hereby call upon individuals and organizations to commit increasing awareness and understanding of the potential benefits of entheogens for mental health, personal and spiritual growth, as well as honoring longstanding ancestral practices and relationships with entheogens.
Okay. And motion for the approval of the consent agenda with the reading has passed. Administration reports ordinance to amend HPMC Section 5.04, Commercial Marijuana Facilities. Second reading. Motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, the administration recommends approval on second reading.
Second.
Move approval of ordinance number 08-22.
Support.
Any more discussion, dissension? Motion passes. Item 2, ordinance to add HPMC Section 10.27, distracted driving, second reading.
Mr. Mayor, the administration recommends approval.
Somebody, only once.
Approval of ordinance 08-22.
Support.
Yeah, we got two.
I'm sorry, ordinance 09-22.
And we have support from.
Support.
McFall. Any discussion? Like to say this is a good ordinance, hopefully to protect the people, as the gentleman talked earlier about distracted driving, paying more attention to the road instead of their cell phone or their radio, and hopefully, we can curtail some of the bad driving habits that a lot of us do have. Thank you. Motion passes. Boards of Commissions, anyone? Old business, pass that up. New business? Anybody got any new business? No new business?
Just to announce to the residents that the John R. entrance to City Hall will be closed for the rest of the week as they're doing the roofing project here at City Hall, so.
Pretty quiet day. Okay. Communications from department heads? Anyone in the audience want to come up and give any updates? Since we have such a big water main break? Thanks, Tim.
They're all literally looking at Tim.
Tim loves to come up and give words.
Yeah, I just wanted to, once again, thank my crew through the Labor Day weekend and also last weekend. We're still a victim of the GLWA break up there in Port Huron. They've got the pressures boosted up down here in the south end quite a bit, so it's just shaking our systems a little bit more. We're not the only city that's having these issues as well.
Our diverter valves, we can't.
Pressure relief.
Pressure.
We did, we did turn them down, and we also adjusted some valves in there, which makes them react a little bit quicker, so it'll stop any type of actual pressure changes. It's, it is pretty radical, the, when I look at the data from Detroit, what, what's going on out there right now.
How about reimbursements?
That's. That's the other thing, too, yes. I've been in communication with them. They've just sent me this afternoon the procedure and the documentation they'll request to review for reimbursement.
Yeah, that's a five-year plan, okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Anything else, Tim?
Thanks, thanks for your deep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you very much. Great job. Communications from any other department heads out there?
I have a question for Tom.
Okay. Then call it up.
It's a question I asked you earlier that we weren't sure about. The, at, on South, on South John R., or at the beginning of South John R., on the Service Drive, the cement has all been torn up. It's, when you're heading northbound, and there's like that curve to turn onto it, and there was a pole there until recently where you could hit the little button, and it would make the crosswalk work. Well, there's a huge hole that was there that they broke up the cement and put blacktop filler in it. Do we know, is that, is that our responsibility, or is that?
Is that at John R. or Nine Mile?
Well, no, this is at John R. and the Service.
Service Drive, 75.
Southbound Service Drive.
Yeah, so there's one actually at Nine Mile, so those were water main breaks over the past winter. Our contractors through the Water Department will be doing that probably within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, all right. Thanks. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other department heads? Anyone, any council members have any questions for any department heads in the audience? All right, we'll go to the City Attorney, Melissa Schwartz.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. State Manager, Ms. Klobuchar.
Does it matter, Mason, the other city attorney, have anything?
No.
It was pretty quiet back there. I asked her if she wanted.
I just want to remind everybody that Michigan's system of municipal finance is indeed fundamentally broken, and we're trying very hard. I had a long discussion today with Representative nominee Mike McFall about some of the things that, you know, we need to accomplish, and, you know, it's, it's a possibility. Again, nothing, we're never gonna get everything we want, but we're starting to see a realization, even with both parties, that something has to be done with cities and municipal finance, and, you know, hopefully, now is the time to do it, because really, the, the whole system just really puts us at a disadvantage. It's been, you know, I've been city manager for 20 years, and of those 20 years, probably, you know, 17, 16 of those years have been very tough financially. So, you know, it's, hopefully, something will happen and critical mass will occur, and we'll make something good happen. Other than that, I want to compliment the Arts Council for running a great art fair this year. It was fun. I spent a lot of time over there and enjoyed myself very much, and I want to thank my mayor and council for all their hard work and support. That's it. It's getting darker. Keep your eyes peeled. Watch out for pedestrians. To go back to what Mike Flores said, Diane and I were crossing at Hazel Crest and John R. to go to a fundraiser at House of Shamrocks, and literally, we almost were driven. R. to go to a fundraiser at House of Shamrocks, and literally, we almost were driven into. We had the group, the white go-ahead-and-walk sign, the light turned green, we walked, the cars turned, they turned left, and the one lady, her window is open, and she's apologizing if she's driving into me. I'm like, why don't you stop your car? Okay? So again.
Speaking of that, why don't we change the timing of the light? I have another 30 seconds.
Changing the timing is not an easy process.
You know what I've noticed is in, neither is someone dying.
No, but we don't change it. It's the County Road Commission. So you can, like I said, I've been trying to retime some lights in the city literally for 20 years. So we call them, we bring them out there. We tried to retime the lights in Hazel Park in Madison Heights at 696 there because they were causing problems. And we've never been able to successfully retime those lights. I've had the County Road Commission out here multiple times. They look at it, they change the timing, something happens, it defaults back to the old timing. It's, it's a problem.
Higher hack.
So I wish it was, there you go.
This is what I've seen in other cities though. All that's being done is that the walk sign for the pedestrian is engaged while the four-way traffic light is still red. So the people start to walk, and all cars are stopped, and it lets people look that, and I've noticed it because you're sitting there stopped at the light, and none of the lights have changed, but the walk light has changed. Downtown, you know, Mark Nikita, he's all over that in downtown Birmingham. And I'm, it's not timing all the lights and changing the timing, it's just getting the walk signal to come on and leave them all red for like two or three seconds. It's like two or three seconds.
We can check that out and see what I had Mark in the office. He came to visit me on, you know, Friday morning, and we had a long talk, so.
I know he was talking about with the MML. He's all about, it's all through downtown.
Yeah, we can take a look at that. But again, I just want you to know, we do not time those lights. So it's not, I don't want you to have unrealistic expectations.
We can get those to work, right?
I've got to be brutally honest with you.
Three seconds is going to be enough.
It's all it really is, is you.
All you're doing is you're, you're giving that pause for them to go across where it all stays red.
You've got kids. It takes a little longer.
That's similar to what we discussed with the service drive at Myers, because they're building the wall right up to it, and you can't see.
Can't see nothing.
Traffic. Whereas if it was where all of them stayed red.
And we have conveyed that to them.
Oh, I know. I know. It's M dot.
Like I said.
M dot, listen to nobody but M dot.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
Most arrogant bunch of people I've ever seen.
Ask, we can try. We'll see what happens. But again, it all comes down to two drivers obeying the law. And I mean, this lady, who, she obviously knew what she was doing wasn't right, but she didn't, she wanted to keep going and keep moving. She didn't want to wait. I'm sorry, I'm, well, then stop.
It's literally illegal to turn while a pedestrian is in the crosswalk, at any part of the crosswalk. As somebody that walks dogs for a living.
We could debate.
And uses crosswalks often.
We could debate the traffic laws.
It is horrible. It is horrible. So it's definitely a discussion that Ed and I have.
Those people don't know the traffic law.
They don't. And it's a, and it's a discussion that we had again this morning. And Ed and I have had this discussion often, and I'm looking forward to the increased walkability that our road diet is going to create and the safety that it's going to create because I'm unsure of the feasibility of creating enough safety as it stands right now. Like I think the road diet is imperative to that safety factor.
And when that happens, we'll be able to do something with the crosswalks, but the best thing with the, the one, the best thing, again, is to eliminate.
I do like the idea of the light, if it's possible. I think that's a great suggestion.
It's a great suggestion of no turn on red at every corner, but let's see what the police chief has to say.
We'll look at it and see what we come up with. But I, I think if we can get them to retime it a little bit, and again, it's not just as easy as Ed calls up the road commission and they come down and do it. It doesn't work like that. It's all part of a SCADA system.
All right, everybody jump online, bash M dot.
They don't.
What's going on, and get a consortium of other groups to do it as well.
And I will tell you.
Maybe they'll pay attention to the timing, and the county. Maybe they'll pay attention to the timing of the lights.
I mean, we couldn't get.
More the better, from all communities.
We've had a hard time getting them to retime Batel Highland and Nine Mile.
No, that's been there for years.
And again, you know, it's not for lack of trying. So understand, it's not, when, when we don't control the process, it's difficult. I'm done. Thank you.
Well, we'll let Councilperson Alyssa Sullivan finish your conversation. Go right ahead. She's already into it.
Well, I just want to say, thank you, Mike, for posting it, and thanks for coming in and talking about it again so we could have more discussion about it. Ed is used to hearing it from me, and I know he hears it from Andy, the bike rider over here, the bike advocate.
Oh, I.
You know, we're all working together to make it a better solution. And I do think that that's a great option if we can get M dot to cooperate on.
And the County Road Commission.
Yeah, and the County Road Commission. I do want to say thank you to everybody that came out today. I want to wish everybody a belated Happy Labor Day. You know, the unions are really making a strong comeback in our country right now, and it's really great to see laborers really get unionized and, and really fight for their rights because the reason that we have the workdays and the rights that we have currently is because of those first laborers who were women and people of color. And I'm really proud of that. And I don't want people to forget what that, that holiday weekend was just about. Also, I wanted to give a shout out, the Arts Commission, or the Arts Council rather, is working on scheduling some artist roundtables. We're really looking to recruit artists in our community and really up our art, our artist content in, like, on our actual arts commission or arts council rather. We really need artists to join our arts council so that we can better serve the artists in our community. And we are going to be hosting those in, one in November and one in December. We're debating if they're going to be online or in person or a hybrid of both, but keep an eye out on the Hazel Park Arts Council Facebook page and our Instagram and our website so that you can join in on those or give your feedback on how it would best suit you to be able to attend. And that's it.
All right. And takes us to Councilman Lucille.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
As Ed said earlier, school is open. Watch out for the kids coming and going to school. Parents, remind your kids they shouldn't be walking in the street. We have sidewalks everywhere.
Thank you, Andy.
It's, you know, I understand some kids, you know, whatever, some reason why they might not be liking to walk on the sidewalks, but I've almost hit kids coming around a corner, and there they are, you can't even, you know, see them. So just watch out for them. And please, parents, remind your kids, okay? It's not that hard. I want to thank the Arts Council, the Hazel Park Arts Council. It's always a great time at the art fair. The food, you have, you keep things new and fresh, you know, you've got different beverages, and the artists come and go, and the music, and it's, it's a blast. It's my favorite thing to volunteer for, and it's a good time. And, you know, I just, I'm not part of the Arts Council anymore, and it still gets.
But you started it. We were talking about that at our meeting last night.
Yeah. Well, I'm just, thank you.
So thank you.
That's what we went to CPM classes for, to legacy management, create something that continues going even after you're not part of it. But, so I'm just, it's a wonderful thing. And I, talking to the artists, you know, they, they find, they love our fair. They're, they're very surprised at all the support, you know, the helping them unload or the parking or just the convenience of everything going on. They really like our fair compared to a lot of others, the cost and things too. So it's, I'm thanking the Arts Council for that. Also, if you have children, tell them you love them and hug them every day. Thanks for coming out.
And to walk on the side.
Councilor Melondo? I'm tickled at all the discussion about the road diet, honestly, because I talk to Ed about this at least once a week. So thank you for coming out, Mike, and thank you for all the lively comments from council because it's something I'm excited about, it's something the residents are excited about, and when we do it, we should have a damn parade. Shout out to Alyssa Sullivan and all of the Arts Council. The art fair was dope. It's awesome every year, but I was there on the first day, like it seems like everybody else, and it was absolutely packed. Really, really amazing event. Just really excited that we have something so fantastic that really features not just, you know, Hazel Park artists, but artists from around southeast Michigan in such a family-friendly atmosphere. I'd like to recognize a couple employees at City Hall. Congratulations to Jared Gageos on now being the Director of Human Resources for the City of Hazel Park. And Amanda Nason is now a full-time city attorney. The election is coming up. If you have not signed up or registered to vote, there is still time to do so. And if you're not able to vote on Election Day, please make plans to figure that out in advance and vote like the lives of the women in your life depends on it, because they do. This weekend, Saturday, from 1:11 p.m. to 4:20 p.m. is Entheo Fest at the Diag at U of M. It is a celebration of entheogenic plants. It's a, you know, free speech event. I will be submitting remarks as I'm not able to make it in person. I'd also like to shout out, there's a member from Decriminalize Nature Hazel Park here in the gallery. So if you're passionate about entheogenic plants like I am, please go ahead and attend and send everybody my best. Additionally, COVID's going around. I have a mask because I am coming off of my fourth bout with it. It's not a competition, but I think I'm winning. So please wash your hands and be safe. And yeah, just be conscious of COVID and all the other things going on. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Mayor Proton McFall.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank Chief Buchholz and our officers for all of the, the dangerous situations that they, that they go through. I don't think a lot of people realize everything because I, I know I've gone for a ride along with the police officers, and luckily, it wasn't very exciting. But I, I really, we really appreciate all the work that you do and our officers do. So thank you very much. That's it.
That's it? Really?
I can talk longer.
Well, I want to tell the chief that a couple of things. The center lane is not a passing lane on John R. And I, when I got them coming, passing, I'm doing 35 and they're passing me at about 50. It's a little, you know, dangerous. If you just want to go a couple of blocks and make a left turn, it's a different story. But to go from Jarvis all the way through Myers Red Light all the way to Eight Mile, and it's happened several times, I'd like to see us a little more patrolling that as well as the north end where they do the same thing, driving up past Woodward Heights. They've done it as well. So if we can focus on some of that targeting, I know the new traffic change, switch over, it's been a little bit confusing for some people, but I think it's better. It's working better. But it is. But people think they got to be each other out coming due there, and I'm hoping there's never an accident there, but this is.
We're going to add some additional signs.
But it's, you know.
To help clarify that some more, but I think this is a much.
Do we have to put one and say, hey, stupid, slow down, or what?
This is the problem. That might catch their attention better.
They might get it. They might get it that way. I think probably what we need to do is have the, the digital sign says speed, how fast you're going.
Mayor Webb says, hey, stupid.
Hey, it takes that to save someone. That's what matters.
It might work better.
But, you know, maybe a digital sign to say, hey, you're doing this fast, instead of 40 coming across the bridge.
And again, just, just to illustrate what I'm saying, I was thinking about this, when I met with the road commission, I asked them to create a left turn lane at Ten Mile and Cousins, because no one ever parks in the parking lane.
Never.
Between Vassar and Cousins on Ten Mile, and it still isn't done yet. And on Sunday, there was a big crash right there from, they couldn't see that blind corner. So, you know, it's like, come on, listen to us. And they don't always listen to us on things where we don't have complete control over.
Sounds like they never listen to us.
Well, anyways, also, let's just be very aware of our surroundings, be careful of lazy, dangerous drivers, as well as the people that like to walk in the street and not pay attention to their surroundings. I mean, it's getting darker. If you're not going to wear the proper gear, then don't be in the street.
If you're wearing all black and you're in the street.
You're asking for it.
I mean, there's, it's not good.
No, not good outcomes. Matter of fact, a couple few weeks back, there was a bike rider got hit. Some lady just creeped through the stop sign for crossing my shop, and thank God he was okay, but he had a sprung ankle, threw him right into the middle of the street in uncoming traffic. But, you know, there's, those situations happen every day. You know, a lot of people don't, you talk about it, but those situations happen every day in every city. And if we can help prevent that by being a little more cautious with distract, distracted driving being one of them, and maybe a four-way stops or no turn on red, much as I hate a no turn on red, I advocate for it as well.
Let's see if we can get the all-red-for-a-few-seconds thing first to go, okay?
We know how dangerous that corner is. You go back 30 years, you remember those girls that died in that corner.
But it's much safer now because we've got designated left turn lanes on all sides. All you used to have there was four lanes, okay, with no designated left turn lane, and you had very limited visibility.
That was horrific.
And there used to be, you know, a crash there. The Liberty families lived there for, you know.
Years.
Decades and decades. And I remember as a kid, you know, my, one of my best friends lived on Carlisle. We'd sit in his backyard and we would hear, you know, not be uncommon, you crash, and oh, there's another one there. So it's much safer now with the designated left turn lanes than having moved Woodward Heights to.
Let's go back to a different thing. The crosswalks, are we going to move those around?
The, what we'd like to do is get rid of the crosswalk north and change that to a traffic like at Chevelin or Mapledale.
That would be good. That would slow some traffic down.
Absolutely needs to happen. I don't know we can, the traffic starts so fast there. I don't know, like today, I was telling Alyssa, I saw two people standing there, and I thought they were going to cross. And so I stopped, no one else stopped, but I stopped, and they didn't cross. They were just waiting for the bus, standing with their hands on the edge of the sign.
Is that close to the bus stop?
It's close to the bus stop.
Same way down by me.
Oh, I didn't realize.
On the south end, right there next to the bus stop.
So.
Because I almost got hit in, in the one that's in front of Maple Gray and.
Yeah.
And I looked at me like it was my problem as I'm pointing at the sign that's.
Oh, what we, what we can do when we, you know, when we do do the road diet is we can put in the middle lane in an area where there's no driveways or streets to turn left, we can put a stanchion in there, and that will have a flashing light, and that will create much more visibility on both sides.
I think Clausen has that.
At least get their attention. Clausen has a really nice setup.
Right.
Or beautiful Clausen, or team out there.
We can do that, but we'll have to find the right spot with, you know, road diet. But I think, I think we need a light.
I think it'd be a good idea.
Have to do a light at some point. And one of the businesses has already stepped forward and.
If nothing else, to have a caution light when someone hits the button, it turns red.
Yes, I don't even.
Nothing else.
We need, he really needs to turn red instead of yellow.
Well, I mean, flashes yellow caution until someone hits the button.
Yeah, and then turns it red.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, something, you know, because it's not going to be in full use all the time.
You don't want to stop when there's nothing.
Nothing is going to work if drivers.
And we don't need no road, well, road rage is a serious thing, and we kind of try to calm it down by being as peaceful as possible.
We do have executive session. Our, our attorneys are here.
But I want to finish my comments, please, since we got on everything else. But I, I love the engagement. Thank you. And I want to thank all the employees for doing a great job. Thanks to Police Department for doing a fabulous job with the last few days, and like always, but really nice job there. And kudos to all those officers, and also to the Fire Department for all their jobs that they have to do. A couple fires over the weekend they had to do. That was close to me, and I'd like to say thank you again to everyone for participating and coming out. Motion to go to exec session for legalities.
Litigation.
Litigation.
Any litigation?
Legalities. I can't get all the.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Support.
Thank you.
Alternative gardens, Ivy Room, and various lawsuits.